Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to present to you the June City Manager's Report. With that, I'll start with some important dates. June is going to be a busy month for us, both administratively and also with the Council. It's probably one of the more active months council meeting-wise since we have the change in governance in addition to the election. So, your dates are here on the screen for you. A couple of highlights I'll point out. The election on June 13th, that's going to happen from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 PM at the City Auditorium. We'd encourage all of members of our community to come out and vote. There'll be a special City Council meeting confirming the canvassing results on June 21st, rather, here at noon in the Council Chambers. We'll have City Council orientation on June 22nd from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM at the City Auditorium. So, we're highly encouraging returning Council members and any potential new Council members to attend the City Council orientation. I'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation later. There'll be the City Council reorganization meeting that's going to take place on June 27th at 6:30. And that's where we have the baton passing ceremony, if you will. And then the Committee of the Whole, this'll be our first Committee of the Whole meeting, that's scheduled for June 28th at 4:15. I'll also talk to you about the meetings and the meeting schedule at the very end of our meeting today under Other Business. So, we've conducted the Budget Workshop over the last couple of weeks, and I'll update you on some of the takeaways for those of you who couldn't make the workshop here in just a moment. But again, just reminding you as we go through the progression here and transitioning the Council from a 14-member Council to a six-member Council and going through the election, that as I just mentioned, the June election, our June 13th election, Council orientation on the 22nd, and then the first meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which will be the first meeting of all the City Council, will be on June 28th. Here's the Budget Workshop takeaways. We split the Budget Workshops into two sections. The first one was really focusing on some changes to our community and discussing the revenue portion and financial condition of the city of Minot. The second takeaway, or the second meeting was to talk about expenses and sort of future considerations. So, I wanted to just get this out for all of you. Some of the changes to the community which have driven our current economic situation, both regionally and locally, involve, of course, the flood of 2011 and the continued recovery efforts that we've been pursuing since that time. And of course, the economic boom associated with the oil and then, and now recession, if you will, locally based on some of the oil activity. Some very positive points that came out of the Budget Workshops that we were able to recognize is that this city has done a phenomenal job in seeking and acquiring grants to the tune of tens and tens of millions of dollars. Actually, all summed up over $100 million over the last 10 years, which is phenomenal. With a very strong credit rating currently, the highest you can have for a city of this size. We have quite a bit of money in reserves. We have advanced a lot of efforts on the flood control projects, and I've been mentioning those along the way in the reports. We've had proportionate growth in all sectors of the city. We haven't therefore seen any one sector grow faster than the other, say, public safety or public works or administration. It's all been proportionate. And we've also added quite a bit of infrastructure across the 10-year period to accommodate growth, keeping in mind that we have doubled, almost nearly doubled, the size of the city over the past 10 years and doubled to tripled the amount of infrastructure that we've added over the same time period. We've had, over that 10-year period, which is kind of what we focused on, we've had a 32% reduction in the mill levy over just the last five years. And we also have property tax subsidies that are about 105% of our total sales taxes. We do underutilize special assessments in the city of Minot when compared to many of the other jurisdictions throughout North Dakota, and that may be something that we might have to discuss more through the budget season or budget process this year. When we talk about forecasted revenues, we know that some of the challenges we have are reduced sales taxes. We have state aid which is being significantly reduced, both in formulas set by a North Dakota legislature, as well as, say, surge funding and other forms. Grant awards are going to be reducing over time, and of course, property tax valuations are down as well. On the takeaways for the second session, we talked mostly about the expense side of the operation. We know that we have some pretty big expenses coming up that we've been planning for for some time, including flood control, the Northwest Area Water Supply, lots of new infrastructure still on the horizon, and then increased maintenance and operations as well as personnel expenses associated with all the infrastructure and growth that we've experienced over the last 10 years. That infrastructure has to be maintained ongoing now, so that increases our operating costs. We do have some uncaptured revenues that we focused on, about 3,500 undeveloped lots, but serviced lots, are out there in our community. These are ready-to-build-on lots that we've extended services to but are not receiving property tax dollars from developed property taxes, sales taxes, fees, and utility rates from. So, we have lots of infrastructure out there, lots of ready-to-build-on lots, but we're not receiving the revenue for that, but we are well poised for that. We know that moving forward, our budget's going to be challenging, and we're going to have to look at a lot of different expense and revenue options, but we do have a sound approach, and I presented the budget priorities and approach to those who attended the workshops, and I think those have been sent out also to you as well last month. Future considerations, we are going to be moving the city towards financing over a long-term, meaning we're going to want to project and model our expense and revenue projections so that we can have a longer-term view to make adjustments sooner than later and therefore make those adjustments more incremental. Moving to the Council orientation, the purpose behind having the City Council orientation is several-fold. We want to discuss and make sure it's clear that the roles and responsibilities of the position are clear and understood. We want to discuss city policies and procedures, Robert's Rules of Order, and other basic information about conducting business with the city. Open meetings and records laws are also going to be discussed. We'll have short presentations from each department which will provide an overview of their operation, and then we'll also outline citywide challenges and provide several helpful resources to help new Council members and returning Council members come up to speed and remain up to speed with city business. Moving on to city of Minot news, most of you have become aware that we are under voluntary water restrictions. The dry weather that we've had over the last several weeks has been relentless, and so water demands have gone up considerably. So, we are asking that, we are asking residents to please curb in a voluntary basis their water use and conform to lawn watering, which is on alternative days. Again, keeping in mind that even-numbered homes should water on Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. Odd-numbered homes should water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday. Of course, all homes can water on Sundays. Next, I want to talk about the City of Minot newsletter. This is something that's been in the works for several months. The first edition went out last month. We had over 1,000 subscribers, subscribers, rather. There was a read rate of about 35%, which is pretty good considering the industry average is about 28%. We're going to be sending out the next edition this coming Thursday, so if you or your neighbors want to get, if you haven't already or your neighbors haven't signed up already, please let us know. You can sign up through the city's website. Just a little point to make, Alderman Lehner's history about Third Street was the most-read article in the city newsletter, so appreciate your contribution. Upcoming stories are listed there, I won't go through them. Lastly, I wanted to inform you that I'm going to be conducting a developers' forum. The date has not yet been determined. We've got, we've got an opportunity here where we're going to try to invite a number of different developers and the business, or excuse me, the Building Contractors Association representatives to come in and give us feedback about our development process. This is one of the goals we've had for Public Works Engineering and Planning for some time. As part of that work, I'd like to ensure that we bring these industry representatives to come in and tell us what their experiences are and where they think that we might be able to make improvements. We'll take that information, use it as both an education session both ways, and then take what we can from that and incorporate the results of that into a business improvement process. So, we expect that to happen sometime in July at this point, but we're still working on dates that work for everybody. Invitations will go out to various developers in the BCA as soon as we can get dates that seem to work for as many people as possible. I was asked at the last City Council meeting to follow up on two items, so I wanted to provide those items to you tonight. First was Council Chambers improvements. There was some concerns about Americans with Disabilities Act compliance with this room, and of course, as you might know, this room is not the most accessible and could use improvements, although it is acceptable as a grandfather facility and would be required to be updated if we were to undertake any substantial improvements. We could however consider substantial improvements now, including building a ramp to allow disabled members of our community, should they desire to serve on the Council or Committee or Commission of that matter, access to the dais. We also talked about an ADA-compliant custom-built podium here, so that people in wheelchairs or have other disabilities could also come and engage in the public process more easily. I invited Scott from Independence, Inc. to attend a meeting with our building superintendent, and we walked through a couple of different ideas, designs, and whatnot. We estimate the cost for both the ADA ramp and the custom-built podium to range between $20,000 and $25,000. We also have been talking internally about some audio/video upgrades to this building, or excuse me, this room, and some of those includes cameras that we'd like to add to get us better angles and more visibility for the community since we livestreamed these as well as archived them. Better audio equipment for folks who might have hearing impairments as well, better projection, particularly document projection, which has been a problem, and improving the way that this podium works from an AV standpoint. It's not the most easily manageable presentation podium that we could have. So, we've been talking about these various improvements. Those improvements will run us around $30,000 to $40,000 for the AV upgrades, and so that brings us to the next thing. How would we pay for this? Well, there's two options that we can consider and maybe several others. One of them is to consider Sales Tax Community Facilities Fund, so we'd be looking at maybe upwards of $60,000 to $65,000 via that program, should that be competitive and be awarded. Alternatively, if it's important to the City Council, we can work to try to include it in next year's budget. So, please let me know your thoughts about that, you know, either now or offline, if you will. There was another follow-up item that I was asked to report back on. This is the Vista House. So, for those of you who don't know, the city purchased the property located at 338 Walder Street. It's located at the intersection of Broadway and Fourth, more or less. This home was one of the last homes in that area, if you look here on the left of your map, and so it became sort of isolated, and the city felt like at the time, as I've been informed, that because it kind of stuck out there, it made sense to also acquire that building as well. Since the building's in pretty good shape, there were some ideas as to what the building could be used for in the future, including a flood history museum, visitor center, gift shop, or anything else that the city wanted to use. Currently, the home is occupied by two of our vistas, our Vista workers with the city, and so I just wanted to give you that information so you had it. If the City Council should desire to purpose that building in some way, shape, or form going into the future, that'd be something that you all would want to discuss and work through, and then we can work with you to come up with any, to evaluating alternatives and help come to a recommendation. Next, I want to talk to you about downtown parking structures. Couple updates here. The city staff met with Cypress representatives over several meetings during the week of May the 22nd. These meetings were long, there was a lot of information discussed. We had been waiting for these meetings for some time. We were promised that Steve Larson, essentially the head of Cypress, was going to attend these meetings, and that's the reason they'd been pushed off for three months. When it finally came to scheduling, Mr. Larson and his team said they would all be available to meet with us. When we show up to the meeting, Mr. Larson was absent. We did have him on speakerphone for about five to six minutes before he told us he had other more important business to attend to. So, we were not able to continue the conversation with Mr. Larson present, but we continued for another four and a half hours, working through a four-page agenda. And the types of things we discussed were operations and management, construction of the facility, that's the parking facility, the apartment construction that's supposed to be following, the financial situation between Cypress and, of course, some reconciliation of the finances with the city. You should know that we issued a payment demand in the amount of about $3.4 million to Cypress. That includes outstanding rent that was supposed to be paid in October of last year that the city invoiced them for, to the tune of about $260,000. They are now in breach of contract, so we have noticed them that they're in breach. Unfortunately, the contract does allow for them to have a four-month cure period, so we're working through that cure period. They may be able to bring their compliance back in with the contract. And then, of course, the remainder of the funds are associated with cost overruns that the city experienced in bringing the construction of the parking ramps to fruition, and those costs were not to be borne by the city. So, we have billed Cypress for those costs. As you might imagine, we're going to have to work through that issue moving forward, and I'll keep you updated as more information comes available. So, that gets us through finances and specific performance. One of the things that came up in our meeting, as we talked about the apartment construction, was that the Cypress representatives have informed us that they cannot build the apartments without the city reconsidering the ownership structure that they have as contemplated in the agreements with Cypress. So, essentially, they pitched an idea that follows. They would like for the city to give both parking ramps to the Cypress free of charge and allow them to hold those parking ramps as collateral for future financing of the apartments, and they would hold those parking ramps as collateral for the duration of the lease that we have with Cypress, which has 97 years on it, at which point they promised to return the parking ramps to us. I said that they may be better suited to come and explain all of these details to the City Council at a future meeting, and they will, they may get that opportunity. The mayor and I will be meeting with the Cypress leadership, including hopefully Mr. Larson, to talk through this concept a little bit more and vet its efficacy. So, that's what I have for you on the downtown parking structures. Actually, one other thing-
Before you go on from that-
Yes, sir.
-Mr. Berry, I think it's very, very important that you clarify that the city is not interested in that. I want to make sure that that is crystal clear and that the Council understands that and the community understands that, that with the track record that we have, that we are not interested in relinquishing any of our assets so that they can get their financing.
Correct.
So, I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. And we did contemplate that in our conversation with them. We even asked the question, "So, if that's not considered by the City Council favorably, what happens next?" And essentially, they said, "We don't really know." So, in any event, yes, we made it pretty clear that there wasn't a very good impression of Cypress and encouraged them to go look at some of the blogs that have been out and some of the information that has come from the City Council Candidate Forum, responses or letters, so they can get a better sense of what the impression of Cypress was inside the city. One thing that's improved on the parking ramps is we complained quite a bit and have been for some time about the janitorial issues, the maintenance and operation of the facility. I'm pleased to report that there have been some improvements made. We are still monitoring those improvements, and we're looking for long-term sustained improvement of the maintenance and oversight of the garages. But at this point, there have been some improvements there, so we'll continue to monitor that. Okay, with that, I won't go into all the details of construction update because I feel like we're getting long here as it is, but for the most part, there've been, you know, we continue with the construction activities around the city. Most projects are pretty well in schedule at this point in time, so I'll leave this with you. We can print this out, of course, it's available online as well, so I won't go through all the construction updates. I'd like to move to a couple other things. One of the things I'd like to do at this point in time, as we talk about the NDR program, is introduce our program manager, Mr. John Zakian. John has extensive background in economic and housing development, finance, municipal services, and disaster recovery consulting. Since April of 2013, Mr. Zakian has been a contract consultant working for the New York City Office of Management and Budget, providing guidance and city administration to HUD's $4.2 billion Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Plan following the devastation caused by the 2012 Hurricane Sandy event. Mr. Zakian earned his Bachelor of Arts in Government from Bates College in Lewiston, Maine, in 1972, and he's completed his Masters of Public Administration from New York's Pace University in 1985. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Zakian to the community and also to the City Council.
I appreciate the opportunity of this position. In addition to you having a very robust group of citizens coming here today, it was my intent from the very beginning to establish a physical proof of my commitment to you that I will be very visible and accessible, hence I'm sitting up in front. I believe it's very important for transparency in this program. It is extremely important to the future of the city. I know we have, and I've told this to the city manager, he's kind of reinforcing to me, we have five and a half years to spend these funds under the Appropriation Act. My goal in coming here to serve you and the citizens is to deploy all of the $74 million in as beneficial and effective and efficient way as possible for all the citizens of Minot and to do it in sooner than five and a half years and make my job irrelevant. And that is my primary purpose in being here. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you, with the city manager, and all the departments in advancing this very important set of programs that he'll go over. Thank you. Well, thank you.
All right. So, on the NDR program, buyouts and acquisitions are continuing as normal. We're going to talk about the downtown gathering space under Other Business tonight, so I'll save for that. Affordable housing and the family homeless shelter, RFPs, are continuing, so there's really been no changes in regard to trajectory of progress here, but the details are included for your perusing at a later time. I did want to also alert you that we are going to have a visit from HUD coming up here between June 26th and June 30th. They're going to be conducting a CDBG, this Community Development Block Grant onsite audit. This audit is just routine, it is not because of anything that the city has done or allegedly done, so I want to put everyone's mind at rest there. This is really just a compliance audit. They'll spend time and focus that time with us on essentially looking at rules, requirements as the HUD program is supposed to be administered, so we expect to spend some time there. We'll use it also as an opportunity to advance conversations on the NDR front, although they are not looking at NDR specifically. We'll have some members there that, from the HUD office, that will be familiar with the NDR program, so we'll do some consultation with them at that time as well. Next up, let's talk about flood control. I don't need to go through all the numbers again with you, I just want to say that the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee's been reconvened and is meeting now to talk about how to finance the local share. There's been some interesting information that's come out of the committee. Tomorrow, we'll be making a presentation to talk with the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee. The good news, bad news story is this, that based on our financial modeling, as everyone pretty much expected, the half cent is not going to be enough to finance the local share. I don't think that's a surprise to everyone. However, the one cent is, and that is for phases one through four and looking at a bond period of about 10 years. So, there's some real benefits to shortening up the borrowing period. We'll be talking about all of those benefits and some of the details behind that tomorrow. So, in some ways, I'd let the cat out of the bag a little bit early, but all the details will come tomorrow in the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee. Again, that's June 6th at noon in Council Chambers. We are accepting Community Facilities Fund applications. This has been a question that has come to our office many times. I cannot guarantee to the community that the Council or anyone else is going to approve any or all of the applications, but I will just let you know, as we've been monitoring the fund, we will have, as projected, by the end of this fiscal year, about $4.8 million available by fiscal year-end. We have applications so far to have been turned in, that total request of about $3 million. So, what happens to the Community Facilities Fund going forward is something for the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee and, of course, you all to decide on, but I thought at least just to make mention that at least we will be accepting applications, and those applications will be accepted until June 30th, at which point we'll close the acceptance of applications and turn all applications over to the Community Facilities Fund Committee for evaluation and recommendation. Automation is well underway. We continue to have a tentative implementation scheduled July 17th. We do hope that we can meet that date. Some of the vehicles are still in construction, and that may be problematic depending upon how much, how many of the vehicles we can actually take delivery of before that date. Some people around the community continue to ask why we want to automate. I think it's become clear for most, but just to remind folks, you know, there are a number of reasons automation makes sense, including worker safety. I found this statistic kind of interesting, that sanitation employees account for only 22%, or excuse me, account for 22% of the workforce safety claims, but only make up 4% of our city workforce. There's other improvements, as has been mentioned many times, efficiency, beautification, and of course, automation's the first step towards moving towards curbside recycling, so we're positioning ourselves well for that. The fire department, Minot Fire Department responded to Earth Recycling Fire a few weeks back. Rural Fire is the one that took point on this and also worked with Burlington and others. We were asked to do monitoring of the air, and we found no substantial pollutants in our monitoring. However, we did get several complaints from folks in and around the vicinity of smells and reactions, so, you know, we don't know, we don't know essentially the details around that, other than to say, based on the monitoring that we've done, that we didn't find anything out of compliance there. Essentially, the facility at Earth Recycling has been destroyed, and there's a lot of conversation as to whether or not it should or can be rebuilt, so there's some conversation occurring internally with the city right now to determine what needs to happen or what should happen going forward. So, there'll be, we'll have several consultations, I'm sure, with the members of Earth Recycling as we try to develop a path forward. One kind of interesting and fun thing to report on is that we had several volunteers help at the Minot International Airport to green up and plant multiple trees, about 125 trees and shrubs at the airport at a cost of about $38,000. This saved about $70,000 of budget that was otherwise budgeted for this to be done by contractors. So, again, working with forestry and community volunteers from Rotary, I'm pleased to say that we were able to save substantial tax dollars and get really, really great results at the Minot Airport. So, I want to thank Rick and Deanna and all the team up at the Minot Airport for reaching out and engaging and involving our citizens in this important work. Other recognition I'd like to give is I want to thank Rod Romine and others from the Coffee Club that goes around and quietly mows in and around all of the city's entrance signs. There's five signs in total. This group has quietly maintained these signs for about 10 years, and you can see there are a number of this, a number of individuals in this group, and it doesn't take them any time to get these signs done. They're very efficient and very prideful of the city, and it was great to spend a short afternoon with them, you know, talking and watching them work the signs. It's really great, and I just wanted to point out, you know, we have a lot of really cool things going on in this community, and this is one of them. We've already recognized Jared, but I had this on here, just want to make sure we had that memorialized in the City Manager's Report. And with that, we'll move to the Minot Public Library. We did receive the North Dakota Star Library Award. This is an award that we were one of three libraries across the state in our category to receive, so it's pretty prestigious, which is great. And then also, if you weren't at the Building a Better Community Fair on June 3rd, that was a pretty widely attended and successful event as well. It was a kickoff to the Summer Reading Program, and we also finalized the Build Minot campaign. We're talking about what to do with that Build- We'll be talking about what to do with that Build Minot campaign information as we move forward. With that, I'll pause, or stop, rather, for any questions. I know it went a little bit long, because we had a lot to discover or discuss this particular period.
Any questions for the city manager? Alderman Padregula.
More in line of a comment. Just wanted to thank you for the very detailed reports you've been giving us, particularly about bad news. That's something we need to hear, the citizens need to hear. And especially wanted to recognize your financial workshops that you held. I first started serving on the council in 1998, and these were the most informative, organized meetings I've ever attended by a city manager, and I think it's really important that people know that, and I certainly appreciate that in my service now over a year on the council. Just a very good job, it's very much appreciated, Tom.
Thank you very much, Alderman Padregula.
Anybody else? Alderman Straight?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that, Tom. And Tom, can you please look into the NDR money to see if we can fund the ADA accessible component here, and also the upgrades? I know that we're not going to relocate City Hall overnight, but that seems to be a pressing need, that could maybe be